Before we stand for the pledge, we have to do a quick appointment of a clerk pro temp. Be resolved, the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, appoints Lindsay Idell, business administrator, as clerk pro temp to preside in the absence of Lisa M. Sernigilia, district clerk. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Tom, second by Janine. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? So carried. Now we can rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Want to thank everyone for coming out this evening. It's a very exciting time for the Board of Education. This time of the year, first meeting in June where we recognize our tenure candidates, our retirees, and especially our top ten students. So we'll do a little personnel items first, and then we'll do the special recognition. So for tenure recommendations, be resolved, the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approves the tenure appointments effective September first, 2023, of the following employees. Emily Barker, school psychologist, Kristen Bove, elementary; Casey Gallagher, art; Cornelia Harris, science; Matthew Hogan, music; Christina Hughes, elementary; Adam Anazon, science; excuse me if I mispronounce your names; Daniel Sommerfeld, elementary; Kayla Weber, general special ed; Jessica DeClaire, teaching assistant; and Sarah Goodwin, teaching assistant. Have a motion, please? Motion by Camille, second by Ed. Any discussion? I just want to say that when we recommend tenure candidates, we hope it's a lifetime commitment to the Highland Central School District. The past four years for most of them was challenging, and I'm sure they excelled well enough for the school administrator to grant them tenure to move forward. So from a district, and I used to say that in years past, that it was a million-dollar investment in the district. It's probably more than that now, but it is an investment in the district, and we hope all our tenure candidates continue on and serve the Highland Central School District. So if there's no other comments, all those in favor? Opposed? So carried. For our retirement, be resolved, the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, accepts the resignation for the purpose of retirement as presented to the board at this meeting. Dana Wood, teaching assistant, and Lorian Marion, school bus driver. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Janine, second by Camille. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? So carried. So at this time, we'll recognize our tenure candidates individually. Building administrators will come up and say a few short words regarding each candidate, and then we'll recognize our student rep and the top ten graduating students along with our retirees. So for the tenure candidates, I believe, elementary school principal is going to come up first.
Good? Good? All right, here we go. Just so that everyone is aware, I'm going to be up here for quite a bit of time. I have a lot of people to get through, so. All right. All right. First person that wants to come up with me, Ms. Barker, come on up. I'm not standing up here by myself. So it is my pleasure to recommend Emily Barker to you for tenure. Ms. Barker has served the district as a school psychologist for the past four years. During her past four years, Ms. Barker's caseload has included students in preschool, kindergarten, and out-of-district placement. She also serves as the chairperson for Committee on Special Education and Committee on Preschool Special Education for those students. Ms. Barker continues, also continues, to complete FBA's VIPs for both general education and special education students. She sees students for individual counseling sessions and also for check-in and check-outs. Currently, she is part of the instructional support team, and through that committee, Ms. Barker helps to recommend and implement academic and behavioral interventions, as well as complete screening measures and additional attentional and behavioral concerns. She has a lot of impact throughout the building, and she has been proven to be a true asset to our building, so. All right, Ms. Bove. All right. Ms. Bove, in this past year, Ms. Bove has fully implemented our new math curriculum into math, and she has planned with the Bosse's math specialists to align the curriculum with the New York State standards. She uses data to inform her instruction and construction learning activities to target weakness in reading, writing, and mathematics. Ms. Bove is organized and plans her units to incorporate hands-on learning, visuals, and while integrating technology into her practices. Ms. Bove continues to look for ways to improve herself and seeks out professional development opportunities. Ms. Bove is proven to be an asset to our district, and we are fortunate to have her at Highland Elementary, and congratulations. All right. Ms. DeClaire. Would you want me to read to her like a little bit about her? So Ms. DeClaire, she has served in the capacity of a teaching assistant for the past four years at Highland Elementary. She is extremely flexible, and anytime she has been asked to make any changes in her schedule to accommodate the needs of a student, she does so willingly. Ms. DeClaire has served in numerous capacities over the past two years. She has served as a self-contained K-1 classroom and has been a true asset, helping students in multi-dimensional. She is diligent and follows plans left behind so that gaps in learning are not created due to a teacher's absence. She is a lifelong learner, and in the fall, she is anticipating going back to school to take some classes on special education. She has proven to be a great teaching assistant who can be called on at any point in time, and she works well with others. All right, Ms. Gallagher, come on up. Ms. Gallagher brings multiple years of experience to Highland Elementary School and came to us from Pelham Union Free School District. While at Highland, Ms. Gallagher continues to adapt, improve, and align the art curriculum for all elementary students. She has also found incorporating grade-specific curriculum into her art class. Ms. Gallagher works with the Teacher Learning Community, TLC, pod to observe, reflect, and improve overall teaching methods and practices. Additionally, Ms. Gallagher works extensively with the Diversity, Inclusion, and Racial Equity Committee, DIRECT, to research and implement professional development related to diversity and equity across the school. Ms. Gallagher is an involved member of our school community. She has created the Art Elementary Art Club and is the chair of the building level DIRECT and is an active member in the TLC Pod, Building Safety Committee, and Scheduling Committee. In the upcoming years, Ms. Gallagher has stated that she, how she is going to grow as an educator by completing an advanced graduate certificate in social justice education, refining the elementary art curriculum, and reestablishing post-COVID norms and expectations. All right, next up, Ms. Goodwin. All right. So Ms. Goodwin, whenever asked to make a change in her schedule or to accommodate the needs of a student, Ms. Goodwin does so willingly. She has served in numerous capacities. She has been able to provide small group RTI instruction and provides other support to students during whole-group instructional time. Ms. Goodwin is also an individual who can be called upon to fill in for a teacher during their absence from the classroom. She is conscientious and is able to execute lesson plans left behind by teachers so that the gaps in learning are not created due to the teacher's absence. Ms. Goodwin brings an array of experience to Highland. Prior to Highland, Ms. Goodwin has spent time as a preschool teacher and a business accountant. Ms. Goodwin has proven to be a teaching assistant who can be called on to assist throughout the elementary school. She works well with others and for the betterment of the school. We are fortunate to have her as part of our faculty. All right, next up, Ms. Hughes. All right, Ms. Hughes has served the district as a science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics teacher, STEAM, teacher for three years, and during the pandemic, she was the third-grade ICT teacher for the virtual class. Ms. Hughes is constantly adapting, improving, and realigning the STEM curriculum to the state standards for all elementary school students. She also incorporates grade-level topics into the curriculum. Ms. Hughes effectively communicates and collaborates with classroom teachers and administration. She has worked extensively with Ms. McCaffrey and the music department, as well as Ms. Gallagher in the art department on various cross-curricular projects. Ms. Hughes is an involved member of our school community, and she sits on the Building Safety Committee, HES Garden Club, PBIS, and after-school robotics club, and has hosted a college student observers from SUNY New Paul. Ms. Hughes has organized and hosted multiple STEAM department meetings and allows for vertical alignment between elementary, middle, and high school level. We are very fortunate to have her at the elementary school. Mr. Sommerfeld.
All right, here we go. So before I get started, so this one's going to be a little long because Mr. Sommerfeld is also an admin intern, so there's a lot of other things that he gets tasked with that are outside of the ordinary. So Mr. Sommerfeld has served the district as a teacher for the past four years. He has holds a Bachelor of Science in Childhood Education from SUNY Oniana, a Master's in Science and Literacy Education from SUNY Oniana, and is currently working on his Certificate of Advanced Studies in Educational Leadership from SUNY New Paul. Mr. Sommerfeld is a great educator and has adjusted to the many changes and challenges in education. He has continued to provide rigorous instruction throughout this past year and has fully implemented our new math curriculum into math. Mr. Sommerfeld has taken on implementing foundations. He has taken on the reading, a new reading, the new reading program to ensure all his students have a solid word recognition as well as language comprehension skills. Mr. Sommerfeld uses data to inform his instruction and constructs learning activities targeting weaknesses in reading, writing, and mathematics. He is extremely organized and plans his units to incorporate hands-on learning, visuals, while integrating technology into his practices. Mr. Sommerfeld incorporates a centers-based approach as well as targeted small group and individual instruction. Mr. Sommerfeld is a very involved member in our school community. Over the past few years, he has piloted into math, waggle, reflex math, and has provided constructive feedback of all the programs. Mr. Sommerfeld was a model classroom and hosted Marlboro Central School District teachers for an ELA walkthrough, where teachers and administrators observed his foundation's ELA lesson. Additionally, he took on a student field observer from SUNY New Paul to help educate future teachers. In addition to serving on multiple kindergartens, Mr. Sommerfeld has assisted in administrative duties. He has been building curriculum maps, assisted in rolling out multi-tiered systems of support, and is the vital piece to the elementary building. All right, we're almost there. All right, Ms. Weber. Ms. Weber brings an array of experience to Highland Elementary. Prior to Highland, Ms. Weber worked at Hawthorne County Day School and worked with autistic students. Over the past four years, while at Highland, she has worked as a self-contained teacher in grades two, three, and a self-contained fifth-grade teacher, and is currently a third-grade ICT special education teacher for third grade with Mr. Mall. This past year, Ms. Weber has fully implemented our new math curriculum into math and has planned and modified the curriculum for her students with her co-teacher. Ms. Weber is organized and plans her units to incorporate multi, multiple different opportunities for her students to learn, including hands-on learning, visuals, and integration of technology. Ms. Weber continues to look for ways to improve herself and seeks out professional development constantly and through Ulster Bosse. Ms. Weber is involved with our PBS committee, and as a leader in our PBS group, Ms. Weber has served on the fundraising subcommittee and organized the School Spirits Day.
Good evening. I will be speaking about Dr. Leah Harris. Dr. Harris has served the district as a seventh and eighth-grade science teacher for the past four years. Dr. Harris holds an undergraduate degree in Biology from Bassar College. She also holds a Biology seven through twelve certification, a Childhood one through six certification, and a General Science Extension seven through twelve. Dr. Harris holds a Master's in Teaching from John Hopkins University, an MS in Biodiversity, Conservation, and Policy from SUNY Albany, and most recently, Dr. Harris completed her PhD in Curriculum and Instruction from SUNY Albany. Dr. Harris is fully invested in the whole child and demonstrates this through the many extracurricular activities she's involved in. This includes the Science Club, Multicultural Club, Student Council, and Science Olympiad. Dr. Harris is also a part of the District-wide Diversity, Inclusion, and Racial Equity Committee, as well as the Building Life Committee. Dr. Harris can be seen at concerts, sporting events, community events, school dances, and many other events where Dr. Harris shows up to show her students that she cares about the interests and she wants to see them in their element. Dr. Harris leads with incredible enthusiasm. Each day, she is constantly shifting and adapting her lessons to elevate the students' educational experiences in the classroom. Dr. Harris, Dr. Harris's classes are led from a real-world perspective. Each lesson provides our students a chance to see how the content could or does apply to their lives, and the students are excited to step into her class and see what experiments, games, labs, activities, or adventures she's going to take them on next. Dr. Harris is a valued member of our school community and district. Her commitment to teaching and learning is extraordinary, and is for these reasons listed above and many others that she has recommended for tenure. Thank you. Mr. Hogan, you're next.
Okay. Mr. Hogan has served the district as our sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade chorus and music teacher for the past four years. Mr. Hogan holds a degree in Music Education from SUNY Potestan and will receive his Master's in Music Education from SUNY Potestan this August. Since beginning his tenure here at Highland Middle School four years ago, Mr. Hogan has entrenched himself in the HMS music community, as well as numerous after-school clubs. Mr. Hogan has been the musical play director, the high, the high school musical music director, and actively participates in all the all-county choir and all-county jazz competitions. This current school year, Mr. Hogan also took on the role as a middle school jazz band director and joined our HMS PBIS team. Along with playing in his own band outside of school, Mr. Hogan also volunteered his time this year to DJ the HMS PTA school dances. Mr. Hogan is continuously honing his craft and looking for ways to engage all levels of learners and interest levels in either music or in chorus class. During COVID, Mr. Hogan really tested his ability to teach in a unique situation, and he did not allow these circumstances to deter him from connecting with students and sharing his love for music education. Mr. Hogan developed a way to conduct his chorus classes outside on our bleachers daily, and if the weather did not permit, he had a backup plan to continue teaching music theory to students in the classroom. He has also advocated and developed a plan for the district to purchase, which we have, nine keyboards, so the students would be able to learn in a more hands-on and active classroom environment. Students are incredibly excited and have requested to take music class again because of Mr. Hogan and how he has fostered a love for music within them. Mr. Hogan is an incredible member of our school community, and his commitment to teaching is extraordinary. For these reasons and the ones listed above and many others, I recommend him for tenure. Mr. Banks could not be here with us this evening, but I'm going to read his letter as well. Mr. Banks has served the district as a sixth and eighth-grade technology teacher for the past four years. Mr. Banks holds a degree in Elementary and Special, and Special Education for the Blind and Visually Impaired from Cootstown University, and a Master's Degree in Educational Technology from the University of Phoenix. Before Mr. Banks came to Highland Central School District, he taught for ten years as a Technology Integration Specialist and twelve years as a Special Education teacher. During Mr. Banks's four years in the classroom, he has helped reinvigorate our eighth-grade technology curriculum to meet the new standards, as well as, as well as expanding on our inquiry-based, student-focused classroom environment. Mr. Banks is willing to be a part of any team, initiative, or event that encourages, encourages and supports the district mission. He can be seen dressing up for PBIS Spirit Days, at a sporting event, sitting in the bleachers with students during a grade-level assembly, playing a game, or showing up, showing a group of students a new demo during lunch, or working with staff to plan a field trip. Mr. Banks offers our students and staff a safe, creative, and collaborative classroom space where everyone feels welcomed, included, and respected. Mr. Banks goes to great lengths to connect to his students and is constantly looking for new opportunities to enrich the students' experiences beyond the walls of the classroom. This includes being a part of our summer STEM Academy for the past two years, as well as being a teacher in our summer academy here at HMS. Mr. Banks is an incredible valued member, and his commitment to our students is extraordinary. For those reasons and many others, I recommend him for tenure.
Good evening, all. Mr. Anazoni, could you please join me up here? Mr. Anazoni started at Highland in 2019 and was hired to build and grow the high school STEM program. Since then, he has steadily increased enrollment in his classes and developed a sequence of three computer science classes, including our first AP Science, AP Computer Science class. His Principles of Engineering course has proven to be a crowd favorite, including engaging units such as robotics, 3D printing, and virtual reality. Outside of his classes, Adam has chaired the High School Building Level Direct Committee for two years and serves as an advisor to two clubs, the AV Club and People Who Code. Most recently, over the last few weeks, Mr. Anazoni could be seen with his students testing out the drones in the building as they fly around and check out some of the classrooms. It's my distinct honor and pleasure to recommend Mr. Anazoni for tenure. Ms. Meyer, could you please join me?
Ms. Meyer is an English teacher who started teaching at Highland High School in 2017. In addition to teaching our College Writing and Rhetoric Course, where students delve deep into serious scholarship, research, and academic writing, Harriet has also developed a rich collaborative partnership with special educator Shawna Sylvester, working together to support all students in their English classroom in developing authentic literacy, self-reflective citizenship, and critical thinking. As part of a reference to support all students in our district, Harriet pursued and received a second certification in teaching English to speakers of other languages in 2021. Since being employed by our district, Harriet has worked to support students not only in the classroom, but also as an advisor to our Gender and Sexuality Alliance, and for the past two years as our district's Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Liaison. She is much recognized by her colleagues for her advocacy as for her teaching, and students know that in Ms. Meyer, they can find a listening ear and a patient supporter. Harriet Meyer has become an invaluable member to our school community. Students, parents, administration, and faculty respect her deeply. It is my distinct pleasure and honor to recommend Ms. Meyer for tenure.
Okay. We're now going to recognize our student representative, Taki Pekatsias. Taki has been an instrumental part of this school board process over the last year. I mean, every month, he gives us a report and gives us a snapshot of what's going on throughout the district, from the elementary school through the middle school and the high school. Your reporting has been fantastic, Taki, and I think we're going to miss that. Hopefully, someone that's going to fill your shoes in future years will be able to give us an updated report of the pulse and, and the feeling of what's going on throughout the district, so we appreciate that, and congratulations.
Taki, could you join me up here, please? So I did promise your mother that I'd say your full name, so I think everyone's about to be really surprised right now. Panagiotis Efemius Pekatsias has been involved in many extracurricular activities, including the varsity football team, track team, and lacrosse teams, National Honor Society, class president, school board representative, interact club, ski club, mathletes, Science Olympiad, and Spanish National Honor Society. Taki, as we all call him, earned the prestigious rank of Eagle Scout in 2022 by designing and completing a beautification project for the Greek Orthodox Church in Pecy, where he and his family are proud members. I am also proud to announce that by taking advantage of our school's Collegian Dual Enrollment Program, Taki has already earned his associate's degree with honors through SUNY Ulster. Taki has already earned his associate's degree with honors through SUNY Ulster. Taki plans to attend SUNY Albany with hopes of becoming an electrical and computer engineer. Taki, congratulations to you as our Student Board of Education Representative.
Now, Mr. Murphy will recognize our top 10 Scholastic graduating students at Highland High School.
Good evening, all again. I am honored to be here to announce the top 10 students of the class of 2023. We all know that a tremendous amount of hard work and dedication goes into achieving a distinction such as this. Congratulations to each of the top 10 students and their families. Students, as I call your name, please come on up. Number 10 plans to attend Siena College, where he will major in accounting, Trevor Ebert. Number nine has committed to attending Rochester Institute of Technology, where he will major in mechanical engineering, Jacob Bishop. Number eight was accepted into Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute and plans to study information technology and web science, Gavin Landry. Number seven will be attending St. John's University in the fall and plans on majoring in nursing, Sanaa Omundi. Number six will begin his pursuit of becoming an electrical and computer engineer and will attend SUNY Albany in the fall, Panagiotis Ephemius Pekatsias. Number five plans to attend Florida Tech and major in general education with the goal of entering forensic psychology, Diana Brulliard. Number four will be attending Marist College and majoring in business, Gabrielle Minor. Number three could not be here this evening. Plans to attend Rochester Institute of Technology and will major in game design and development, Kevin Zhang. Number two, our salutatorian, will attend SUNY College of Environmental Science and Forestry, where she will major in environmental biology, our salutatorian, Erica Angelillo. And ladies and gentlemen, it is my distinct honor and pleasure to introduce our number one graduate of the class of 2023. Plans to attend SUNY New Paltz and will major in biochemistry, our valedictorian of the class of 2023, Alicia Mokel.
The following individuals are those that have retired during the 2022-2023 school year. These eight individuals have given 188 years to our district, 23.5 on an average. I have to say that each and every one of you, depending, no matter what area of the school that you serve, you've touched the lives of every single one of our students moving through. I can attest to that. I had three boys that graduated, and I'm sure everyone on this board has had a son or daughter that's either moved on, graduated, or still is in the district. That no matter if you're a bus driver, a school custodian, food service worker, a teacher, TA, a clerical worker, whatever occupation you are in this district, you have touched the lives of every single one of our students. My boys still say to me, "Is so-and-so still teaching?" Because they recognize those individuals, even when they have graduated and they're out of the district almost 20 years, they still remember some of the teachers that touched their lives. So for all those retirees, we wish you well in your future endeavors. Some might be your golden years, some might be moving on to another location, maybe a warmer location, but congratulations and good luck. Each one of the building or their representatives will be up to recognize them individually. All right, Ms. Wood.
All right, here we go. On behalf of the entire school community, I extend my warmest congratulations on your well-deserved retirement. Throughout your 13 and a half years, you have been an invaluable asset to Highland Elementary, supporting teachers and students with dedication and care. Ms. Wood's dedication to students and staff were evident throughout her tenure here at Highland. Over the past year, Ms. Wood has been influential in the success of our students in math. She worked endlessly to ensure students' safety during arrival and dismissal. On a daily basis, Mrs. Wood fulfilled many tasks throughout the school building, such as helping teachers to prepare and deliver lessons, assist in organizing highly effective classroom environments, and served on the AIS team, Academic Intervention. Ms. Wood's colleagues adore her, obviously because they're all here, and she will be missed immensely by students, parents, and staff. On behalf of the entire Highland family, I extend our heartfelt congratulations and best wishes for fulfilling retirement. May this new chapter of your life be filled with joy, relaxation, and the knowledge that your effort has made a lasting impact on the lives of our students. Thank you, Ms. Wood, for your dedication. You will be greatly missed. All right, Ms. Smith. I don't know if she was... I'll just speak about Ms. Smith because she... All right, so here we are, here to honor and bid farewell to a remarkable educator who has dedicated 33 years of her life to teaching. Throughout her tenure, Ms. Smith has consistently demonstrated an unwavering commitment to our students, their growth, and their education. Her passion for teaching, her innovative approach to pedagogy, and her ability to inspire a love for learning have left an indomitable mark on our school community. Ms. Smith has been an exceptional role model, not only for our students, but also for her fellow educators. Her professionalism, enthusiasm, and dedication have set a standard for excellence that will be remembered long after her departure. It is with profound gratitude and heartfelt appreciation that we extend our best wishes for a well-deserved retirement. May this next chapter of your retirement, of your life, be filled with joy, fulfillment, and new adventures. Thank you, Ms. Smith, for your extraordinary contributions to our school and for leaving an enduring legacy of educational excellence. You will be greatly missed, but your impact will continue to shape the lives of our students for years to come. Congratulations. All right. All right. Here we go. This is going to be a good one. All right. All right, we're here to honor a remarkable individual who switched careers and ended up dedicating her life to education. Ms. Yameta made an indomitable impact on the lives of countless students. Throughout her 22 years of service, Ms. Yameta has exemplified the true spirit of teaching. Her unwavering commitment to her students' academic and personal growth has been nothing short of inspiring. Ms. Yameta has not only imparted knowledge, but also has fostered the love of learning, nurturing young minds to reach their full potential. Beyond the classroom, Ms. Yameta has been an invaluable asset to our school community. Her dedication, passion, and positive influence has touched the lives of students, parents, and colleagues alike. She has been a mentor, a role model, and a friend to many, always going above and beyond to support and uplift those around her. As we bid farewell to Ms. Yameta, we must also celebrate her remarkable legacy. The lessons she has taught, to me included, the wisdom she has shared, welcomed and unwelcome, and the passion she has instilled in our students and will continue to resonate for generations to come. Highland is immensely grateful for her tireless efforts and unwavering commitment to excellence. On behalf of the entire school community, I want to express our deepest gratitude to Ms. Yameta. Your contributions to our school have been immeasurable, and you will be sorely missed. May your retirement be filled with joy, fulfillment, and new adventures as you embark on this next chapter of your life. Thank you, Ms. Yameta, for your service, dedication, and lasting impact you have made. You have truly made a difference in the lives of so many, and your legacy will forever be etched in the halls of Highland Owen. Congratulations.
Good evening. Ms. Eileen McElroy has dedicated 20 years of her educational career to the community of Highland Central School District. Since I began here at Highland Middle School, Ms. Mack has been a staff member that shows up each day with a positive attitude and dedicated to some of our most academically struggling learners. Eileen has taken a special interest in some of our most difficult-to-reach students and has made personal and lifelong connections which have impacted the students well beyond the classroom. Ms. Mack is an original PBIS team member and has always been in support of finding positive ways to communicate with our students. Ms. Mack is also one of our most dedicated HMS Spirit Week dresser-uppers. Without fail, no matter the crazy idea that is being proposed, Ms. Mack fully commits to the theme and entertains both students and staff alike. Halloween has always been Eileen's favorite holiday, and one year she even came to school full-on in character as the Mad Hatter. Staff and students could not even recognize her. Eileen, you are more, as you move into your retirement journey, I hope you take some time to reflect on all that you have achieved. You have been more than just a teacher to the HCSE community. You have been a mentor, a friend, a role model, and an advocate for our students. Your unwavering dedication to our students and our school has made a profound impact on all of us, and your legacy will continue to influence generations to come. Thank you. Ms. Dana McGrath, come on down. Okay. Ms. Dana McGrath has dedicated 26 years of her educational career to the community of Highland Central School District. Ms. McGrath has worked in all three buildings and in many capacities, focusing heavily on our students who struggle with reading and comprehension. HMS has been lucky enough to have Ms. McGrath with us for the past five years, working with our students and staff. Ms. McGrath is compassionate, kind, out-of-the-box thinker, incredibly creative, dedicated to her students, has a love for theater and the arts, and making each Spirit Day and picnic or other event as special and memorable as can be. Ms. McGrath bravely took on planning our end-of-the-year celebration and picnic this past year, and she reminded all of us how special this day can be and how important celebrating our students is, and how these moments are the moments that become core memories for our staff and students. Ms. McGrath specializes in making others feel seen, heard, and special. She notices the insignificant things and always is willing to celebrate small victories, leaving you laughing and smiling, and most importantly, knowing that you have a friend and confidant in Dana. Dana, the entire HCSE community wishes you good health, happiness, and success as you move to Florida, and enjoy the next chapter of your life. Your pizzazz, spunk, and dedication to our students will be greatly missed, but your impact you have made on our community will last for forever.
Good evening, everyone. Congratulations to all who have received recognition tonight. I'm very happy to be a part of the community. But I'm here tonight to recognize Loriann Marion for her service of 27 years to the Highland School District. I've had the pleasure of working with Loriann in the management department for the past year. She has dedicated and qualified much time to open 19-day examiners for the kids. In recent years, training requirements have changed for school bus drivers. Loriann has willingly and faithfully stepped up to meet all requirements that need to be followed through the federal insurance program. She has excelled in transporting our students, not only with safety and professionalism, but with empathy and care. I'm very proud to have the opportunity to work with Loriann as part of the transportation in the Highland School District. Thank you, Loriann, for all your justice and service, and to myself. Congratulations on your retirement. You'll be greatly missed, and I do too.
Good evening, all. One of our retirees at the high school could not be here this evening, one of our school counselors, Kelly Nelson. Kelly has been an integral part of the school counseling department at the high school for the past 20 years. Starting in 2003, Kelly served as a leader, mentor, and confidant to her colleagues, while also being someone who her students could count on when they were in need of someone to listen to and advocate for them. The high school will miss her tremendously, but we wish her the best on this new chapter of her life in Florida. Mr. Dave Cunningham, please come join me. Mr. Cunningham has worked for the Highland Central School District since nineteen ninety-six. Of those twenty-seven years, twenty-one of those have been at the Highland High School teaching Regents-level earth science and a wide variety of electives. He has also taught for six years at our middle school, teaching earth science, physics, chemistry, and astronomy. When he first came to Highland, he was working on his master's in instructional technologies. As an early adopter and with his interest and understanding of technology, he volunteered to be part of the original technology committee for the district. He was and still is happy to help his coworkers with troubleshooting and questions about their technology needs. Over the years, Dave has advised numerous clubs, including Science Olympiad, the Chess Club, and the Ping Pong Club. He also spearheaded grade-level field trips to the American Museum of Natural History and the Hayden Planetarium. Moreover, he coached the girls' varsity tennis team for several years. Mr. Cunningham clearly loves and stays up to date on earth science content. He fully understands the importance of educating people in cause-and-effect relationships at this critical juncture in human history. He had an immeasurable impact on the students of Highland, and we are lucky to have had him as part of our Highland family. We wish him continued success and happiness as he enters this exciting new phase of his life. Congratulations, Dave, on your retirement. You will be sorely missed.
Okay, congratulations to all our honorees tonight. At this time, we're gonna take a short, brief reception. We have coffee and juice and some dessert in the back, and we can all kind of mingle and congratulate all our honorees. Okay, we'll continue with our regular meeting, and we'll open the floor up to public comment at this time. Okay, we'll close public comment. And we have the consent items from IA to through IE. If anybody wants to pull something out, we can address it individually, or we'll just take it as a complete consent agenda. If everyone's okay, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Camille, second by Mike. Any discussion? Need a few minutes?
More of a comment than a discussion, because we have a lot of contracts on here for our unaligned folks and we just wanna, I certainly want to thank you for all you do for Highland Schools. A lot of times, being outside of a unit, you're treated like a singleton, but every one of these positions is a high-leverage position, and just want to thank them for their effort and their work over the years and future years.
Okay, if we're not going to pull anything out, we have a motion on the floor by Camille, second by Mike, to entertain our consent items. All those in favor? Opposed? So carried.
Just one last comment there. Wanted to thank the leadership of of our HSA unit, as the contract was just approved, and that was a lot of work on both sides, so I thank you both for being here and all your leadership throughout the process.
Okay, under curriculum and instruction, our principal's report. Elementary school.
You gotta turn it on, the button on the right.
There we go. Back on stage, here we go. Don't really have anything additional to, in my board report. You know, just want to say thank you to everybody for welcoming me aboard and, you know, I guess putting up with me, you know, so. So thank you for everything. I appreciate it. Getting me, I know the late hire I was, so I wanted to say thank you, guys, for doing that and taking me on.
I also have a thank you. You recognized a lot of people here tonight, Ian, and we know you're in your first year, and it was a big toe, and you did a very nice job. I appreciate the effort. Thank you.
Thank you. You guys have any questions? There's a lot of shift F-seven. Indelible was the word that I used. Indelible.
Good evening. My only addition is thank you for a great year, and we're really looking forward, Mr. Cronin, we're looking forward to September and all the things we have planned. And that's it. Any questions? Great, thank you so much. Oh, wait, sorry. You have envelopes in front of you. Thank you, Mrs. Kev, you reminded me. Your big white envelope is your invitation to our eighth-grade moving-up ceremony, and the smaller envelope is your invitation to our National Junior Honor Society inductions, which are next Wednesday, and I know Taki's gonna talk about them as well this evening. So those are your two envelopes with some fun things inside from the middle school. Thank you. Yeah, those right there. Thanks.
Thank you. High school?
Hello, all again. Nothing to add to the Highland High School principal's report. I'd like to just, again, recognize Mr. Brandon Opitz and thank him for coming to join us this year. He's doing a great job as assistant president. I just want to recognize him for that. And although I think I'm going on my twenty-fifth year in education, it was my first year as principal. It was a great year. We had a lot to navigate this year, and I want to just publicly thank Bill Zimmer for his mentorship throughout the year and friendship and helping get me through some things that needed assistance. So, Bill, thank you very much. Any questions for the high school at all?
No questions, just a comment. I just wanted to thank you for your support of a taste of success. I thought that program really brings in lots of different opportunities for kids and to be exposed to, and it actually supports, I know, some conversations here at the board level where we want students to be exposed to jobs as well as, you know, the trades, as well as occupations and careers. So, thank you and keep up the good work.
Thank you so much. Yeah, some of the students really enjoyed the pizza, so it was, it was nice to have the kids come in and get that experience. Thank you so much.
Okay, at this point, we have our directors. I think we have a lot, or most of our directors here this evening, so if you have any questions for the directors in their report. Just before that, I want to thank all our directors and administrators for a successful year and looking forward to September. I know there's a lot of work that has to be done over the summer months. This is our last meeting until reorg, but I'm sure we'll be seeing you on and off throughout the summer, so thank you. Are there any questions for our directors? Okay. Thank you. Taki, you're up.
All right, good evening, everybody. Starting off with the elementary school, a big thank you goes out to Mrs. Adamec, the elementary school band teacher, and to Mrs. McCaffrey, the music and chorus teacher, thoroughly preparing the fourth-grade chorus and fifth-grade band for an in-school concert that took place on June first for grades K through two and grades three through five. Students performed their musical talents onstage in the upper cafeteria. Students also performed for their families at the high school during the spring concert. Both events went very well. Moving on to the middle school. First, the eighth graders had an amazing time last Friday, visiting Lake George, where the students got the chance to tour Fort William Henry, take a boat cruise of the lake, and also spent time at Six Flags Great Escape. This Friday, the seventh graders will attend their class trip to Lake Compounds for a fun-filled day. Seventh-grade students will be inducted into National Junior Honor Society next week at the middle school on Wednesday, June fourteenth. And finally, the end-of-the-year celebration will be taking place on the last day of school. The celebration will be for the entire middle school and will feature games, arts and crafts, and other activities that are sure to make for a great day. Moving on to the high school. The Highland High School paid tribute to soldiers who gave their lives to protect our country and its rights during the annual Memorial Day Assembly on May twenty-fifth. The event featured performances from the Highland High School Band and Choir and a speech by Korean War veteran Charlie Busek. After the assembly, all grades participated in the spring pep rally, which included games and recognition of spring sports teams. Field day then took place and included many fun activities, including a dunk tank, badminton tournament, sumo wrestling, and various other activities. This year's scholarship awards ceremony took place last Wednesday, May thirty-first. There were ninety-three scholarships totaling just under fifty thousand dollars, and fifty-six students were selected to receive awards. The annual powder puff game took place last Thursday, June first. I had the pleasure of coaching the seniors, and it is with much sadness that I say the juniors beat us sixteen to seven in an intense back-and-forth game. Regents review has begun taking place after school with respect to each subject. The annual yearbook dedication assembly took place this past Friday, June second. This year's yearbook had a dual dedication to both Mr. Mango, the high school economics teacher, and our principal, Mr. Murphy. The senior boat cruise will be taking place on Monday, June twelfth. Seniors will be able to enjoy a nice dinner and boat ride along the Hudson River. The senior walk-through will take place the following day, Tuesday, June thirteenth. Seniors will meet at the firehouse and be able to walk through and revisit their old schools which they grew up in and spent countless hours in. And that wraps up my report. Are there any questions? No? I'd just like to say thank you. I really enjoyed this opportunity up here. Thank you for accepting me, and thank you for allowing me to work with the building administrators. I had a really good time, and this has truly taught me so much, so I just want to say thank you.
Thank you again, Taki. I just want to back up for, want to thank our IT department, Rich, for these microphones. I know in the past, I always thought I had an ice cream cone in front of me that I had to swallow. This is a little different. I mean, trying to get used to staying away from the mic because it does pick up. I think it would pick up my heartbeat if I put it close enough. But thank you for implementing these mics. They're well worth the investment, and I think everybody can hear most of the board and the commentaries very well, so thank you. Okay, moving on to our Assistant Soup, Human Resources, and Pupil Personnel at the board.
All right, thank you. Today, we had our, one of our biannual meetings with our Medicaid representative, and I talked about numbers a few meetings ago. And just to give you a quick recap, going back to eighteen nineteen, our claim value and payment was seventy-two thousand, and last year, in twenty-one, twenty-two, we got up to a hundred and eighty-six thousand. It was the hope this year of getting to over two hundred thousand. So with our claims so far, and these take us through the end of February, we're at two hundred and forty thousand. So we're looking at, they'll be submitting another claim from the services from basically March first through the end of the year. So we anticipate another pretty big increase there. And that's a big shout-out to all the staff across the board with a lot of time and paperwork that they put in to get back some of that reimbursement, but it's very important, so I just, you know, want to thank all our staff with all the time and energy that they put into that. We did just get our new allocations for our annual grants. Each year, we get IDEA grants, which help support our special education teacher salaries, so we just found out those allocations, so we're in the process of writing those grants, which will be submitted by the end of the month, and then our ESA-funded grants, which will be submitted by the end of the summer. Lastly, I just want to thank Ms. Heisenbittel and her team. Today, our Special Olympics team performed this afternoon out on the football field. The weather held out long enough. We got a little worried when the hail came this afternoon as we looked at the radar, but it did clear up enough for them to perform out on the track and on the football field. So in the past, they used to hold the event at West Point, and then COVID, they really scaled that back, so a lot of the teams are performing in-house. But we had a great celebration and performance out there with the students and a lot of staff and families there to celebrate them, so it was a really nice event. So thanking Ms. Heisenbittel, Ms. Moore, and Ms. Hall and her team out there working with them.
I think just a comment, those, those numbers are very dramatic increase, and I know, I appreciate you thanking the staff, because I know it's a lot of tedious paperwork, but those numbers are very impressive, so thank you so much for all the effort.
Okay, Assistant Soup for curriculum and instruction.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I have two items to share with you this evening. On Tuesday, May twenty-third, the Direct Committee held its final meeting of the year. As the school year draws to a close, the committee is diligently working on finalizing a proposed district equity policy. This policy aims to formally establish the committee's role and outline the district's priorities regarding diversity, equity, and inclusion. It includes provisions for stakeholder input, regular data collection, and review processes. The committee's intention is to present this policy proposal to the board in upcoming months. Looking ahead, a significant portion of our committee members will continue their involvement into the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. During this time, the committee plans to develop a more comprehensive implementation document that builds upon the proposed policy. By doing so, the committee aims to ensure a well-rounded approach to effectively address equity across our district. Last week, I had the opportunity to attend the first-ever School Safety Summit organized by the New York State Education Department in collaboration with the Center for School Safety. The conference took place in Albany at the Empire State Plaza Convention Center on May thirty-first and June first. More than nine hundred school administrators and law enforcement personnel attended. The overarching theme of the summit revolved around the establishment and nurturing of safe and supportive learning environments for schools across New York State. Throughout the two-day event, various presentations caught my attention. These included sessions on prioritizing students' well-being and safety, enhancing school safety through defective school board policies, formally, formulating a comprehensive family reunification plan for unforeseen circumstances, implementing trauma-informed lockdown drills, as well as strategies, strategies for preventing bullying and fostering a positive school climate. One particular takeaway that resonated with me was the significance of fostering connections and cultivating a sense of belonging among individuals within our school community. When people feel connected and valued, the likelihood of them causing harm to themselves or others diminishes significantly. Attending the School Safety Summit proved to be time well-spent for me. I look forward to next year's summit, where I hope to expand my knowledge further and engage in collaborative efforts to continue improving the safety and well-being of our schools. And that's all I have for you this evening.
Any questions? Mr. Zimmer? Thank you.
Thank you.
Air Superintendent?
Okay, so last Thursday evening, we had the honor of recognizing and honoring Holly Brooker as our distinguished friend of education. I'd like to thank President Barone, Vice President Miller, and Trustee Bucatsias for attending that event and showing Holly how much she does, how much we appreciate what she does for our district. It was a spectacular evening. I know Taki already said this, but I think it deserves a second shout-out. I attended the senior scholarship night and was blown away at how much money this community put out for our graduating seniors, as you mentioned, at close to $50,000, so kudos to the community for coming together with those scholarships. Last Friday evening, we attended the Rotary Service Above Self Dinner. This year, we honored many members of the community, but two with connections to our district, teacher John Manganello and student Jessica Rendon. I'd like to also thank Trustee Bucatsias for attending that. It was a very nice evening where we got to support people from our district, and it was nice to have such a great showing at the table, so thank you for that. This is a very busy time in our schools. Last night was our elementary school concert. It was a full house, both for fourth grade and for fifth grade. So as you know, we've been staggering those concerts over the last couple of years so that they start at different times so that everyone can fit in the auditorium. One of these days, we will have everyone trained that if you have a later, if you have a fifth grader, unless you have a fourth grader, you should show up a little later because a lot of those families came and took up some of the seats, but it worked itself out. Just thank you to the board. It was a pretty warm evening, but the air conditioning was very much appreciated by the community in that, in that space, and the sound in there was so much better because of some of improvements that we've done over the years, so thank you for your support on that. Tomorrow evening, we have the middle school at 6 o'clock. Thursday night, we have the high school at 8, sorry, Thursday is the 8th, and that one will start at 6:30, so please come out and support that. Thursday morning, we will be honoring our scholastic achievement folks, so our valedictorian, our salutatorian, we will be going to a breakfast at Ulster County Bosse's to honor them. That's at 8:30 on Thursday morning. Next week, June 13th, is our annual high school graduation walk, starts in the village and goes through all of our schools. It's a highlight, so look for pictures of that on Facebook and our website. And then just to let everyone know of some upcoming graduation ceremonies that impact our schedule and also recognize our students, this Thursday evening, 6:00 PM is the career and tech presentation at Ulster Performing Arts Center. Then on Tuesday, June 20th, the Grade 5 Moving Up Ceremony is at 12:15 at Highland Middle School, and on Wednesday, June 21st, we have our middle school moving-up ceremony at 11:45 at Highland Middle School. And then the capstone of all is our high school graduation, Thursday, June 22nd, at 6:00 PM, with a rain date of Friday, June 23rd. And then just as a reminder, I know we mentioned this before, our reorganization meeting will be Saturday, July 1st at 8:00 AM in the boardroom, and that's all I have for this evening.
Any questions for the superintendent? Okay, we'll move on to Board of Education, new business. General counsel retainer hours, proposed legal services contract be resolved the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent. Approve the attached contract effective for the 2023-2024 school year between Highland Central School District and TDWPM as presented at this meeting. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Mike, second by Janine. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? So carry. Bond resolution, our buses, bond resolution dated June 6, 2023, of the Board of Education and Highland Central School District authority not to exceed $266,756 aggregate principal amount of serial general obligation bonds to finance the acquisition of school buses and vehicles at an estimated maximum cost of $266,756. Levy of tax and annual installments in payment thereof, the expenditure of such sum for such purpose in determining other matters in connection therewith. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Tom, second by Ed. Yes. I'll ask Limsy to do a roll call for that, please.
After I say your name, please say aye. Arnay, Ed Mizell.
Aye.
Janine Gemmell. Mike Bucatsias. Camille Adoma. Tom Miller. Al Barone.
Aye.
Five ayes, one nay.
Yeah, my apologies, that's a, that's a, that's a yes. It messes me up, the a or nay, so it's a yes. Thank you.
Got it. Six ayes.
Thank you.
Taki, don't land it. Okay, reorg meeting be resolved with the Board of Education upon the recommendation of superintendent. Approve the reorganizational meeting of Board of Education for the 2023-2024 school year to take place at the Highland High School boardroom on July 1st, 2022, at, 2023, I'm sorry, at 8:00 AM. Can I have a motion? Now you could say no, Mike. 8:00 AM.
I said yes to that one when we were digging around.
We have a motion by Janine and Mike. All those in favor? Opposed? So carry. Proposed Board of Education meeting dates, the following proposed dates for the Board of Education meeting for the 2023-2024 school year, this will be placed for approval at the reorganizational meeting. So just take a look through that, there's one that's on a Monday, August 21st, due to some conflicts, and then our summer meetings, normally in the past, we start them at 5:30 PM. All right. Anything for old business? Anything for the good welfare of the district? Okay, I'll open the floor up to public comment. You're welcome. Okay, need a motion to, oh, is there any other public comment? Sorry. Okay, we'll close public comment. Need a motion to go back into executive session for the purpose of a continuing discussion on an issue. We very well may be coming back into public session. No need to stick around unless you want to. I'm not sure how long the executive session will take. So we need a motion to go back into exec. Camille and Janine. All those in favor? Opposed? So carry. Yes. Personnel issue. Okay, we'll go back into E32, and then I'll reconvene back here if necessary.